We'll call the meeting to order. In Evendale Council. Tonight, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing on the tax budget for nineteen two thousand and twenty-six. Its ordinance twenty-five to twenty-seven. Is there anybody who wishes to talk about, make a statement? Or, yell at us. If not, that will constitute the hearing on the budget. And we will then go to the agenda, and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with the regime of justice for all.
We'll take the roll.
Mr. Sextrow.
Here.
Ms. McDaniel.
Here.
Mr. Putoff.
Here.
Ms. Smiley-Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Patterson.
Here.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
The consent calendar, the minutes have been previously distributed. Are there any additions, corrections, or changes? If not, could I have a motion?
To move.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley-Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to committee reports, and finances first.
Thank you, Mayor. So, May tax receipts were a decrease of three point one over last year, and also, year-to-date, we are at eight point five less than last year. But, five months does not make a year. Village overall results, total revenue, one point nine million, total expenditures two point one, net use of funds two hundred and eight thousand one hundred and thirty-eight, which we expect. Total revenue, year-to-date, ten million three, total expenditure is nine point six, and positive net result of seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-two. There's a couple ordinances that we'll cover when we get to that part. Gorman Heritage Farm, farm update presented by Farm Director Marcus Gardner. Playscape has been a huge success. August first is ribbing cutting, and I believe that's at noon, right? At noon. And Director is concerned with after-hour access to the farm and animals posing, proposing locking system for all gates, and really for the safety of the animals, because certain ones cannot be fed other items. Carolyn Baer has resigned in her last day. Full-time staff will be July twenty-first, however, she will stay on and help out with the, all the way through, what's it called?
Row-by-row.
Row-by-row, thank you. Summer camp is in full swing. May Farm Fest was a success, but reassessing the purpose and real estate tax exemption of forty thousand for ice, for ice-based building. Recreation, the pool is open in full swing after a very cold start. Recreation Center staff has completed their CPR training. Tennis courts resurfacing is taking place, and if I'm mistaken, it's...
We're back open.
What?
We're back open.
You're back open, that's what I thought. I thought I saw them there playing this morning. Summer camp, one hundred and eighty-one funs, funshiners. It's seventy-one, or seventy-seven sunbeam, two hundred and fifty-eight campers enrolled. Summer concert series is starting this weekend, on Saturday. Servicing-engineered bucket truck has been delivered and put into service. Personnel, Mr. Hammond has declared his intent to retire after the Fourth of July holiday, so on July seventh, and we are advertising replacement for him, and his retirement is after approximately thirty-six years. Summer hire ordinance is on the ballot, I mean, ordinance today, and then twenty-twenty-five recycling day total for recycling was five percent increase over twenty-twenty-four. Service Department building, the building is enclosed, and the exterior work is proceeding. All the masonry work is complete. Contractors is working on the EIFS system around the upper perimeter of the building, and MEP companies are working on the rough-in and fixture installations. It is still anticipated substantial completion will be by the end of June. During the evacuation of the sanitary sewer lines, we have discovered an underground structure with petroleum residue. The Geotech engineers has sampled and provided a method for disposal. The CAC elevator demolition of the basement in the first floor has begun. Spartan Drive building, the contractor is nearly complete with the demolition in Phase One. Arrow Hub entry signage, Kohler has presented a series of options for the entry signage, and resurfacing program has started, is, has been selected. Sherbrooke Drive, South Medallion, Medallion Drive ramps. This project is actually, has been issued on June third. Park Hills entry sign, the project is currently waiting Duke, Duke for installation of the meter, and they may have been out there working today. I saw them there. Light sprinkler landscaping will be completed once the meter is put in. And Tri-State Trails, a follow-up meeting with this entry was held last week, and it was determined that, for the first time, the trails from Exxon Avenue to Sharonville should be the priority. Connected dog food, the planning commission recommended a lot-split consideration, and that's an ordinance tonight. And then Glendale-Milford Road Bridge. Federal Highway Administration has mandated that the bridges are to be inspected every two years. ODOT has assumed this task, and during the recent inspection, the two bridges over the railroads on Glendale and Milford had been flagged for significant issues, and they're still in the middle of evaluating all that and to determine the cost and how to proceed.
Okay. Any questions? Observations? Thank you. We'll go now to fire and police, and we're going to go a little different. Councilwoman Karen Smiley-Robinson is going to give your usual report, and then we're going to talk about the twenty-one CP and that kind of thing after that, before we go into the regular council meeting. So, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Okay. Let me start with fire first. We're going to be having a hiring committee meeting tomorrow to interview a couple of candidates to fill a vacant position in the fire department. The chief shared with us that Woodlawn has a new Reddick sign policy that they will be using in their community. He's sharing that for us informational-only. We are not going to be using that particular policy here in Evendale. There's an ordinance on the agenda for some donation of some rope equipment that is no longer viable to use and not significant enough to have at auction, so we're planning to donate that. Our software management, we've been using ESO for several years. They took over for a company that we had been using, but now we're looking to another company first, Duke Management, I believe, to take over our software management. And we have entered into an agreement with Angel Ariel to do beta testing of the drone project, so. Also, last of course, but not least, is that the chili lunch is tomorrow, from eleven to one. Please attend. Moving on to the police department, we're going to have another officer go through school resource training. Let me just leave it at resource, school, new school resource officer for the coming school year. Our cruisers, our new cruisers are in, but we're waiting for them to become fully equipped, and we hope that that will be completed, and the cruisers will be available for use in July. And then, as the mayor has indicated, after I finish this report, I'll go through twenty-one CP's report. The cultural arts programs, the May Art Adventure was to Dinsmore Homestead and Towsey House Tavern. It was well-attended, as usual. And the June Art Adventure is to Gerson Gardens, hope I said that correctly, and the Second Street Market, which is in Dayton, and registration was open as of last week, and it's still open at this time, so please get your requests or registrations in. The Fine Arts Exhibit, which we talked about a little bit last month, but wanted to come back and emphasize how great, we continue to get very good feedback about it. And note that we partnered with Princeton Community Middle Schools Art Department, brought in forty pieces of art to hang in the hallway to get exposure for young artists as part of our show. Monthly wine tasting, there are different themes for every month, so May's wine tasting went well, and it featured Prosecco's for Mother's Day, and was held on the Evendale Rec Center patio. The June wine tasting will be held at Gorman Heritage Farm this Saturday. Spaces are still available. And the elevator update in the Cultural Arts Building is underway, and we're limiting some exhibits, we're pausing them until we get further along in that, and the exhibits are easier for people to access. Music recitals, private events, and theater companies continue to use the Bell Tower space, and our lighting system in that building has been updated and programmed such that it's easier to use. And the Bell Tower Arts Pavilion will be the site and the host for our August eighth big art party. And the Cultural Arts Department is preparing an RFP for feasibility study to look at how we use the Arts Center and the Bell Tower for programming. I don't have a building zoning, planning and zoning report to provide to you tonight, but Councilman Burke already mentioned the ordinance on the lot split. So, that's our basic committee report. Let me pause and ask if there are any questions on it before I go to twenty-one CP. Okay.
Okay, twenty-one C.
Okay. I'm going to give kind of a readout on twenty-one CP. I'm not attempting to cover what has previously been covered in public, so I'm going to refer you either to our website for that information, or to the press conference that was held about that. But I wanted to talk to everyone so they understand the full context of how this investigation was conducted. And where I quote directly from the report, I will try to note that. "The purpose of the report was to conduct an after-action review, quote, 'of the events and circumstances surrounding the events of February seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, relating to a white supremacist demonstration near the villages of Lincoln Heights in Evendale, Ohio, and the public safety planning in response from the department and the village of Evendale to the protest and ensuing counter-protest, and concerns subsequently raised about the nature of the response.'" Where I say "department" and quoting them, it refers to the Evendale Police Department. Where I say department and quoting them, it refers to the Evendale Police Department. And I'm going to also state that where we use the word protest or protesters and counter-protestors, those are the words as defined by 21CP in their report. Before going further, I would like to say that the mayor and council has unequivocally supported throughout this process the thoughtful actions, reasoned decision-making, and observant of First Amendment rights while protecting our neighbors and the public, de-escalating the conflict, and most importantly, preventing loss of life or physical injury to all involved in the events of February 7th. And for that, we are very grateful to the men and women of our police force and their competence and professionalism, which was on display during and after the events of February 7th. The 21CP report provided the methodology used, factual findings, plus analysis and recommendations, which demonstrated that our support was well-founded. We are moving forward with a clear understanding that our words must be matched with action. The village has committed to full transparency, not only in making the report available in its entirety, but also by creating a digital dashboard accessible to the community to track implementation of the recommendations. I encourage everyone to read the report. It is laid out very well and with specific details to support every aspect of their report.
And please just do not go to the recommendations. Read the entire report, because that really speaks volumes of how everything was conducted in their approach.
We have already taken steps to improve training, strengthen inter-community collaboration, ensure Evendale is better prepared to balance public safety with First Amendment protections. We understand that we must build and sustain relationships to move forward. The areas of investigation as laid out in the report are the events that occurred on February 7th on the Vision Way overpass, which included not only the protest and counter-protest events, but events following the dispersal of the protest. Again, the word dispersal is the terminology used by 21CP. The next area of investigation was the dispersal of protest vehicles and release of demonstrator group to the highway. The third area of investigation was the protest dispersal activity that occurred at the Lachlan Schools Education Annex Building. And the last area of investigation was events relating to the public response to the incidents of February 7th. The objectives of the report was to conduct a full, fair, and thorough investigation into what occurred at the protest to establish a factual record. The second objective was to evaluate and assess the department's response to protest, counter-protest, and any related activity by either the Evendale Police Department, village leaders, or administration. And the last objective was to make recommendations to the department regarding changes, updates, or enhancements to policies and practice for immediate implementation. Next, I'm going to share with you what 21CP reviewed in order to come up with the report. They reviewed all Evendale Police Department body worn camera footage. They also reviewed third-party video and audio, including recordings posted to various social media platforms, as well as video and audio captured by various journalists. They reviewed audio recordings and written transcripts of 911 calls received via emergency dispatch. They reviewed the Evendale Police Department and Hamilton County Sheriff's Office incident reports and complaints, and they reviewed the permitting process for events and activities similar to February 7th. They also reviewed Evendale Police Department policies, protocols, procedures, and trainings, especially those related to protest and demonstration management. Reviewed MOUs, MOAs, and agreements with any other law enforcement agencies involved, including the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. All social media reports and posts, it was clearly an exhaustive review that was conducted by 21CP. They also interviewed the Evendale Police Department command staffed, command staff refers to all of the officers in our department, including the chief and assistant chief. Other Evendale personnel, other Evendale Police Department personnel involved with and/or present during the events of February 7th. The leadership and residents of Lincoln Heights, the superintendent of the Lachlan School District, the superintendent of the Princeton City School District, a representative of an external law enforcement agency who participated on a voluntary basis. And I would like to note that the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office declined to speak with 21CP. That's what was stated in the report. In terms of disclosure, want you, everyone to understand, and they specifically stated this way in the report, that no Evendale Police Department or Village of Evendale exerted personnel, asserted any control or authority over the investigation or this report. The report did not attempt to identify masked demonstrators. It is not an internal affairs investigation of the Evendale Police Department, and it does not adjudicate any factual disputes about the actions or performance of particular officers or supervisors. At this point, I'd like to note that the internal after-action review by the Evendale Police Department has been released, and it did consider whether the actions of our police officers were, quote, "reasonable and prudent considering the totality of the circumstances." Reasonable and prudent is the standard used for evaluation of a police officer's actions. And after viewing similar demonstrations and discussing with attorneys possessing expertise in First Amendment issues, the internal consensus, you know, as, excuse me, as well as the views from outside the department were unanimous and without qualification that the actions of the Evendale Police Department were reasonable and prudent considering the totality of the So, the report contains an overview of the events. It reviewed in great, it's reviewed in great detail in the report itself, and I would like to echo what Councilman Burke said. Please read the report in its entirety. It includes direct quotes from officers involved. It provides detailed accounts of all Evendale Police Department interactions with the protesters and counter-protestors, including events in Lachlan. No findings were cited in the report, but it does show the collaboration among officers of all departments responding, including the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. The report is extremely informative. So there were eight recommendations, however, that were made in the report and an analysis along with the report. The recommendations themselves were detailed in the report, specifically detailed in the press conference, and are on our website, so I'm going to refer you to them for specifics on the recommendations. Six of them apply specifically to Evendale's Police Department. Most of the recommendations refer to improvements in training and changes to policies and procedures to strengthen their effectiveness. Please know that five of the six recommendations have already been completely implemented. Two of the recommendations apply to Hamilton County departments. Evendale has completed its portion of these last two recommendations. So, in conclusion, I would like to give the chief an opportunity to talk about the internal review, if he so chooses, at this time.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Smiley-Robinson. Real quickly, before I start on the internal review, I said this at the, at our committee meeting. I was thoroughly impressed with the work that 21CP did on this, and I had several conversations with them throughout the process, and it shows in their report. It was just not a cursory review. I know the one gentleman that spent a lot of time watching Body Cam, I bet you he had over a hundred hours just himself in watching Body Cam footage, and that's where the quotes come from. We're very satisfied with 21CP's report, and it was very helpful to us as far as our own internal review as well. As you mentioned, our internal review, it overlaps somewhat with 21CP. The one thing I did do, though, is we did not do in-depth interviews of any of our personnel until after 21CP had done their in-depth interviews. I wanted 21CP to get each officer's honest experience about what happened, not sort of some consensus that we collectively came up with after the fact. So, we had our debrief and all of our interviews after 21CP had done their interviews. So, what happened for the first, probably four to five weeks, was just a lot of factual data collecting that we did, and after that, then we got into some of the nitty-gritty of the incident. And between the 21CP interviews and some of our own internal discussions, our incident debrief, we anticipated many of the recommendations that 21CP came up with, and we were actually able to begin to implement some of these recommendations before their report was even finished, because we discovered some of the same issues that they discovered. Our internal report is posted online. I prepared for you all, and I think it will be posted online tomorrow, an update on the recommendations. As you mentioned, five out of the six, we have 100% completion rate on those. We made all of the, all of the policy adjustments that 21CP made. There was the one recommendation, number two, part of their policy suggestions, we already had those in policy, but those were not policies that they had requested of us during the internal review. So, we were already in compliance with that recommendation before it came out. And one last recommendation, an internal one of our own, was to do some multi-jurisdictional training with other agencies around here. There was a lot of discussion among police chiefs in the county about how their agencies would handle this. I had really in-depth discussions with probably seven or eight police chiefs, asking them to critique us and tell us what they thought we could do differently. That was part of our review. And the one thing that came from those discussions was, we should have some multi-jurisdictional training where we have neighboring agencies all together. This day, there were thirty-nine police officers from sixteen different departments that responded to the demonstration. That's very typical in Hamilton County, a large-scale instance, you have a lot of mutual aid. So we are going to be doing some mutual aid training, but there's a lot of moving parts of that, and that's going to take some time, but we hope to get that accomplished in the next couple of months. Blue Ash has had them at the Tesla dealership, Ambley Village has had some up there, Lachlan and Reading had one shortly after this, Sharonville routinely has them up at the convention center when different political organizations use the convention center facilities. So, there's a lot for all these agencies to learn by doing some mutual aid training. We'll be working on that part. And I don't have anything else, but I'll be glad to take any questions anybody might have.
Yes. Am I correct that it was, 21CP's report was released to us on the 27th and to the public on the 28th? And when was Evendale's report released?
I believe ours was on the 29th.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, okay. So they were, you guys were doing their own reports independently?
Yes.
And that's important for everybody to understand, too.
Yeah, and if you look, if you look at the two reports, you can see they're slightly different approaches, so, yes.
But you're reviewing all the same, a lot of the same information?
Yes.
I would point out that the two constitutional lawyers that were hired by the village are here tonight. I don't know whether you want to say anything or be available to answer any questions that might come up. You would be available to try to answer those, but they have been extremely helpful on the constitutional use of this procedure and very helpful on that, and have guided the village quite a bit in that part of the situation. So. Anybody else have anything to add?
No, I do, I do want to thank you gentlemen. I found our discussion when we got together to be very, very informative and helpful, so I do appreciate your time and efforts and how you helped us.
I got, I got just a couple of things, Mayor. First of all, we need to lead with this all the time. Thank you. You and your department did a fantastic job under really, really difficult circumstances, and it is even harder to understand that the way you build public trust is to now let people come in and look at every aspect of what happened and review it and put you through the wringer to see if you in fact did what you said you did. And you guys passed the flying colors, and we could not be happier and more proud of all of you. So thanks, that's the first piece. Second piece is, this marks roughly four months since this happened. Cannot thank enough all the council members, the mayor, the department heads, the different resident groups, who all took their time and decided this was important enough to begin connecting with other people, begin trying to solve some of these problems, begin trying to build bridges. And so here we are, we're four months in, and 21CP provides a really good marker for all the things that we think we can control and did right, and some really useful markers for things that we need to, we need help with. You know, the best thing that we can do for citizens and police is to give police really, really clear markers and really good resources about how to behave in and around really difficult situations in first and second, that involve First and Second Amendment. All kinds of things could have happened, and unfortunately, your men were in the middle of it. And so, to the extent that we can lean into those and change some of the environmental factors that you deal with day in and day out, we ought to pursue that. Third thing, I know this, God, I'm right there with everybody. I know there's the tendency to want to say we're done. This is, we've done the report, we came up, thumbs up, we're good. If we're going to live up to what we said we're going to do, this needs to be a beginning. Now, it does not need to be a beginning in terms of the overall flat-out community effort in the last four months. Everybody can breathe and take the summer, but we still need to very much push forward on a number of these issues so that everybody feels safer, everybody feels more connected, and there's less reason to believe that these things will happen in our communities again. So that's the third thing. And then finally, all of the, all of the people that were involved in this and are looking at this from afar, this is what you hope good government would do. You hope that they would stand at arm's length, you would hope that they would come out and try and prove themselves, you would hope that they would say, please come in and let us examine. We feel like we've done an enormously good job on the, on the Evendale side of allowing people to come in, see our process, see the transparency of it, and to prove that we are who we say we are. And we just need to keep that attitude up and keep it moving forward. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Tim, thanks again.
No, thank you.
I have one other thing to add, and, you know, it goes without saying, the spouses, its significant others, and other family members of all the police officers, you know, a big thank you to them for putting up with all this. It's definitely a stressful time on all of you, on a work situation, but it does affect your family as well.
Yeah, thank you for that. That is true, and that's much appreciated.
Okay. Thank you very much.
There's one other thing I would like to note. Thank you, Chief, for your report. You feel free to sit down. Really has to do with us. A lesson learned, it was somewhat mentioned in the report, but the importance of leadership, speaking out quickly, is a lesson that we have learned and we take to heart. And in the future, should any event arise where that is required, we will do so, I'm sure, with deliberate speed.
Okay.
All right, I just have one note tonight, and that is, the Fourth of July is coming. We do not allow private fireworks to be set off in your yard. Have consideration for your neighbors, your family. Come on down to Evendale, we have a magnificent display. It's a village, and you can see all the fireworks that you're going to need to know. If you find it deficient here, you can go up to Blue Ash, but don't set the firework off in your driveway. Okay? Anything else? All right. We will now proceed to our ordinances for tonight. Ordinance 25-37, ordinance, I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
An ordinance approving the 2026 tax budget of the Village of Evendale and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
I need a motion to suspend the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 25-37 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 25-38. I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to approve an agreement permitting rope, rope rescue equipment purchased by the Village of Evendale to donate or dispose of or obsolete, unneeded equipment and declaring it as an emergency. We talked about that earlier. I need a motion to read, to suspend the second and the third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
I now need a motion to suspend the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 25-38 adopted as an emergency.
Ordinance 25-39, I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Ohio Plan Risk Management, Inc., to provide property and liability insurance with the assistance of Highland Administrative Services for the Village of Evendale, and declaring it as an emergency. We've talked about that before. I'd like to suspend, a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
I now motion to suspend the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 25-39 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 25-40. I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 25-39 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 25-40. I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
I need to recuse myself from this one.
You're excused.
Proceed.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to hire seasonal employees in the service department and declaring it as an emergency. This is to hire two seasonal employees. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
And I need a motion to suspend the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
I need, I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 25-40 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 25-41. I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
I now need a motion to suspend the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
I now need a motion to suspend the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 25-41 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 25-42. I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
An ordinance to approve a subdivision and consolidation of parcels and declaring it as an emergency. This is the TLC property that the dog food company is going to occupy. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
I need a motion to suspend the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Putoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson.
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 25-42 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 25-43. I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.